Two-minute warning.
You're doing those right there.
Got it. All I do is. Buddy, clear?
Sir.
Okay, I'm gonna call Loudoun County Commission Workshop to order.
No, it's separate, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing. We have to announce it as separate.
I will. Just a second.
Okay.
For June 16th, 2025, the public hearing will be first, so I will announce that. And to the men and women in blue, thank you for folding yourselves into a Mark cruiser. We appreciate it. Buddy, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's time we begin our public hearing for the 25-26 budget. Blackmore first sign up.
The honors are going first, Mr. Mayor. My name is Blake Moore, Loudoun County resident in the first legislative district. I stand before you this evening asking this legislative body to duly consider two things. One, the importance of transparency as it relates to government budget meetings and subsequent decisions that are affected by those meetings. And two, the importance of having records of those meetings publicly available on the Loudoun County government website. On May 22nd of 2025, I made a records request pertaining to meeting minutes and records related to the current budgeting process. Approximately one week later, I received a letter from the county lawyer stating that because I did not include proof of residency with my request, that my records request was denied and would not be honored until proof of residency was submitted. And even then, the final decision on my request could take up to 30 days from the date of receipt of proof of residency. Of course, I could argue that the legislative and judicial branch of our local government know full well that I am a resident of this county, but the bigger issue is why should I have to submit a records request in the first place? Should a resident of Loudoun County not be able to fully expect that all budget-related information would be available on the county website, especially considering that the county website was redesigned this year to improve functionality? The 2025-2026 budget overview is very sparse in the information provided, which is reasonable if the supporting documents are available for consideration and comparison. The word "comparison" is key here, since some of the documents clearly suggest that a comparison is in order. For example, the current appropriations resolution budget request and the amended budget are the same, suggesting that what was asked for is what was given. Another example is the General Debt Service Fund 151 that clearly references the 2023-2024, 2024-2025, and 2025-2026 budget documents. But when you look at the new county website, Accounts and Budgets link, only the 2023-2024 and 2025-2026 budgets are listed, or documents are listed. Where is the 2024-2025 documents on this link for public review? On the same link is a debt obligation report from 2014, educational capital projects financial report from 2014, but no links to similar documents showing more recent updates. There are many other examples of incomplete documentation to inform taxpayers in this county regarding how decisions are being made for this budget compared to previous budgets and what considerations are given to legislative fiduciary accountability. I know there are a lot of hours that go into the budget discussions and decisions, and a small salary and subsidized healthcare for commissioners cannot always provide full compensation. However, I will end my comments by saying that there can be no faith in government if our highest offices are excused from scrutiny, and they should be set in the example of transparency. Please, ensure that the taxpayers that have to fund these decisions don't simply have to trust elected officials, submit records requests, and then hope they receive full transparency in the entire decision-making process. Thank you.
Sheriff Diggs.
Can I ask a question? Is that the practice we have? If you make a records request, you have to show that you live here?
State of Tennessee required.
So everybody that requests records... Okay. I'm sorry.
Usually I stand up here and ask for money, as man will attest to. We've got a group here that represent everyone from a volunteer to our corrections division, patrol, investigations, narcotics, and our command staff as well. Usually, when you see a bunch of people, it's like, what's going on? This year, well, since we came in office, we tried to keep all of our employees up to what we're trying to do, what we're trying to ask for, try to work for them with county commissions. They know what our initial budget proposal was or request was, and they know what the proposed budget outcome may be. But we just wanted to come and thank you for all the work. And it wasn't what we had requested, but we're still very satisfied, and we thank you for the job you do. And they just wanted to come and show their support, as next year will be the next year, and next year will become. We've got a great, outstanding agency, 127 employees, which is obviously the largest of schools. And they just wanted to come and show their support, and thanks for a wonderful budget for... I just want to say thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Jimmy, thank you for showing up and all of your department here. You are a man of integrity, and I appreciate that always, and so is all of your men and women. If I could give you all a million dollars, I would. I know what you do. You work all night while we're sleeping. And I think we forget that sometimes, that you're always out there to serve and protect, and I appreciate each and every one of you.
My name is Pat Hunter, and I have a serious concern about public hearing. Two newspapers, the News Herald and the Daily Edition, printed that on Monday, June 30th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at the courthouse annex located in Loudoun County, Tennessee, the Loudoun County Budget Committee will hold a public hearing on the above stated budgets for the fiscal year. And it prints the budgets. I have not been able to find a correction to that. And if that is the case, and there's no correction, today's meeting was not published as a public hearing. It should have been. I know that in the workbook, it said today was the date, but that's not what the newspaper says. So, and that's also not in compliance with the 1957 budgeting law that says it's 10 days prior to the end of the fiscal year, which would have been today, but the notice is incorrect. I think that there should be some cuts. I think the donation to the Chamber of Commerce for $120,000 should be cut. They no longer serve as the visitors bureau. We have no events that are planned. And, you know, if you want to buy a membership, that's fine, but not $120,000. The property assessor has requested funding of $77,000 annually for two flyovers over a four-year period, roughly for $288,000. There's no guarantees that enough properties will be found to pay for this. Respect the fifth request. Do not gamble with our taxpayer money. I supported the additional pay for sheriff and the corrections officers, because I think that there is a difference between someone who puts their life on the line, someone who gets into a car, someone who has to deal with people that may harm them. There is a difference between a dangerous job and a clerical job. And I think it's a little bit insulting, the sheriff. He's okay with that, but I'm not. I think it's insulting to treat the sheriff and the jailers the same way as you would a clerical job. I just don't think it's right. You know, as seniors, we receive a colon, but it is based on the cost of living, based on inflation. I think currently it's 2.4, so $3,000 for all employees. And I can't find anyone that can tell me they do job evaluations, which we should have. There should be job performance. If you're going to want to pay someone a certain amount, $3,000, or 8% for part-time, there should be evaluations. The sheriff's department does evaluations. I think they're the only ones that do. So there is a distinction. And I think that while you are going to give everyone the same amount, I really think that the sheriff department should receive more, because they put their life on the line, and there is a big distinction. One thing that I did ask, I made a records request, the sheriff, I mean, not the sheriff, the assessor has a value finder, and the service agreement says that the value finder has developed a service to assist taxing authorities in identifying missing, undervalued, or misclassified properties and help ensure they are properly valued for property tax assessments. So I think there's tools in the toolbox, and I think $288,000 is excessive and too much, given our current budget climate. This is not a good time to, last year, to raise our taxes, and now to grant this funding request. The other thing that I have is, I want to know why two pennies are being earmarked for education capital when the school board has just received $110 million. And we still do not know, based on the planning commission approving the original plans without the tract, we still do not know whether we're going to get a tract in Greenback. So those are all issues that are out there, and I hope you consider these when you approve the budget. Thank you.
Can I have the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, turn it back over? Thank you.
Okay, Kim Jenkins.
Thank you, Commissioners. Items A through E will all be a resolution amended as only not for Loudoun County, Tennessee, pursuant to chapter 713-7-105, Tennessee Code annotated with item A being to rezone from A1 Agricultural Forestry District, A3 Developing Agricultural District, Loudoun County Tax Map 36F, Group B, Parcel 2, located at 706 Gilbert Lane, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 3rd legislative district. This was recommended by a planning commission, but it was noted through the planning commission that this lot could not be subdivided, because the applicant's and possible issues with that occurred, that it would go back or revert back to its current zone.
Gilbert, I'm kind of... Where is it?
It's off of Unisha Road, before the Black County Inn.
It's almost Black County. Do you know where this is? Do you live on Gilbert? Do you?
That's my house.
It's my house. It's not her house. Mine's on the string.
Oh, now I know.
I know the road very well.
Thank you, Jim.
So, item D is to rezone from A1 Agricultural Forestry District to C2 General Commercial District. And it's all part of this C2 General Commercial District, Loudoun County Tax Map 4, Parcel 18, located at 16020 El Camino Lane, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 3rd legislative district. The front half of this property is already zoned C2. They reconfigured the lots, which isn't represented on this currently. They've absorbed some A property, and we're looking for the whole parcel to be zoned as such. Of course, in development of that property, it has to have city water.
Mr. Chairman, that's up mine Joe's district, El Camino Lane, which is an area of Loudoun County you can't get to without going through Knox County. It's nearly all industrial right there on that end, and there's already, I can't see but glare, but there's a huge building on part of that property now. It's my understanding they're just wanting to get the rest of their property zoned the same way that the, where the commercial part of it is. So I don't see an issue at all with it. It's the appropriate place for commercial.
C will be a rezone from A2 Rural Residential District, A3 Developing Agricultural District, Loudoun County Tax Map 5, Parcel 44, located at 1630 Matlock Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 3rd legislative district, approximately one acre only. Just looking to subdivide parcel for family.
This is Mr. Cornett. Lives almost catty-corn across from Sheriff Davis out there on Matlock Road. He's just cutting off an acre for a family member for a home, is what he told me at your meeting last week.
And it was recommended. D will be to rezone from A1 Agricultural Forestry District, A3 Developing Agricultural District, Loudoun County Tax Map 67, Parcel 37, located at 4879 Caldwell Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 4th legislative district, approximately one acre only. This was recommended. It was amended by the applicant. He had two one-acre lots shown. He stated that he could not survey it outside of body accordingly, so he's just looking to create a one-acre parcel with a home on it, that, as I understand, already located on the property.
I'll remember that on Tuesday's meeting. I'm good.
Then, D is to rezone from A2 Rural Residential District, A3 Developing Agricultural District, Loudoun County Tax Map 17, Parcel 89, located at 2028 Wilkerson Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 6th legislative district, approximately two acres. They are looking to, they had requested rezoning of this whole tract a few months ago. They're looking to create a, as I understand, two parcels on one side. If you recall, this is divided, this park is divided by Wilkerson Road. They're looking to create two tracks. But in doing this, they can get the acreage if they don't dedicate the right-of-way. This portion of Wilkerson Road, the county does not own the right-of-way. They want to dedicate the right-of-way to the county in the creation of this plat, but leave that two acre. It'll reduce that one parcel down to two acres.
I'd like to see some kind of a plat or something for the rezone, to see how they're gonna connect to Wilkerson right there, if they have to.
Is that something you'd like to see prior to the, if it's put on the 30 yet?
Oh, yeah. Sure. Yeah. Please. My other concern is runoff, so I'd like to ask if they don't go there and bulldoze the entire hillside of all the trees. If you can pass that along to Benny, please.
I'll see what I can get.
Thank you.
Next one. Is it?
That was it, sir.
Okay.
Thanks, Jimmy.
June 30th. It'll be on the commission meeting after the budget adoption.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Y'all have good day.
Thank you. Public comments. There's two on the general agenda. Fred Kennel, come on up.
I'm gonna introduce myself and my wife real quickly. We're new to Loudoun County. My name's Fred Kennel. My wife over here is Sandy Kennel. Sandy's native Tennessee. She's from Oak Ridge. We've been here three years almost now. I retired out there at the guard base. Used to fly the tankers overhead, so forgive me for that if I cause some noise. But I see a need here in Tennessee, and I think you all will probably have seen the same thing we have. Sandy and I both are retired now. She was a clinical pharmacist with the VA. I retired with the military. We spent 40 years doing the, what would you say, the good Christian thing. And the good Christian thing was, you know, have a good life, work hard, pay your debts. We didn't raise kids, because we got married at 40, so we're late starters. But what we saw in society in general is that when we go to church, people in church aren't involved cynically anymore. And it's kind of sad. And you kind of might see that in your own congregations. I'm not sure if you've seen it there, but you're gonna see that a lot of people think politics and what the county does, and what the state does, and what the US government does is dirty and evil. And it's not. It's our civic duty, and one of the blessings we have in this nation is that we're allowed to represent ourselves and to elect people who represent our values. So what's beautiful is, is in the state of Tennessee, last year, Monty Fritz and some folks got a resolution together that we're gonna dedicate the month of July to fasting and prayer, and that passed last year. Well, that was for last year, and Sandy and I attended the Loudoun County meeting that they had, and there was about 30 to 40 folks here. And I see about 30 to 40 folks here at least, so if all of us go in the prayer meeting that we're gonna have this year on July 14th, on Monday at 1:30, we would probably have more than we had last year. So this year, this resolution was put up by Monty again, and Mark Cody in the Senate, and the resolution passed by 90%. Now, think about that. In our state, even the Democrats voted yes on this resolution to have a month of prayer. So what I'm asking the commission to do is to dedicate July 14th in the county, here in Loudoun County, as a day of fasting and prayer. And I've got just a sample resolution that I've left on the desk there for you, and also a letter that went out. If you guys will go to the Tennessee website, praythe number 4, tn.us. You can go to that website, and you get flyers for your church, something that you can hand out at church assembly. That little letter there, you can read that on Jim 29th, and have that read from your pulpit. The reason I'm excited about this is because I believe that we need to pray, and we need to get our church pew members involved in civics. Because the schools aren't teaching anymore, or at least that's kind of the experience I've seen. Because I don't see how all these kids can hate America so much that they want to fight you over it and tell you that you're living in an evil country when we don't. So I encourage you, I was so excited about this, and I even asked my minister on Sunday and said, hey, would you be willing to pray at this meeting that we're gonna have tonight? And he said, yes. And he said, can I bring my family? So I want all of you to take this back to your preachers or your youth minister and ask them, will you pray at this prayer meeting? And you can call the number, you can contact me, or you can contact Monty, and we can get anybody who wants to pray at this meeting to come pray. So I highly suggest that we do this, and we make a resolution for the county itself. And Sandy and I believe it so much that we bought a billboard in Lenore City. You may see it if you go down to Starbucks or go down by 321, or the Home Depot, Walmart, Exodus. If you look to your left over there on the south side of the road, you'll see a billboard. It's gonna be there for a month. And it's gonna highlight prayfortennessee.us, and it's gonna be 1:30, July 14th, at the Loudoun County courthouse outside. Bring a little raincoat if you want, umbrella, lawn chair, and let us pray together for about an hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Buddy, you put the resolution together for June 30th?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Pat Hunter.
My name is Pat Hunter, and I attended the budget committee meeting today for, I guess I have two questions. One is about the number two consideration of request to approve a resolution for cash flow from the county general to education capital projects in the amount of $600,000. Nothing was discussed about this, but does anybody know what the $600,000 will be used for? That's one question. And then, when it comes to the recycling center fund 116, it's my understanding that there's going to be an expansion at the convenience center, and something about the railroad leasing two acres. And I think that before you do this, I think we need to hear from the Riverview community. They live next door to the convenience center. They have to live with the smell. They have to live with the inconvenience of the convenience center. And I think before you enter into a venture, that it would be good to hear from the people that live there. Because I know when it was first sited there, this whole room was full of neighbors from the community, and they did not want it in their backyard. And they complained, because when it was in their backyard, was in their backyard for a long time, the property next to it, which was the rational school to the old Lenore City Negro School, their place of worship, you could smell the convenience center next door. It was that atrocious. And I just think that, you know, it has to be somewhere, but I'm not sure that the people in the community want it there. And if it does have to be expanded, maybe we should be looking for another location, because Loudoun County has plenty of property. I just think that we should be mindful of the people that have to live next door to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. That concludes public comments for the workshop. Dan Shaver.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Two things I have somewhere right here. The first is, after last month's vote, that we rescind the letter we sent two years ago to the EDA to withdraw. Last month, we voted not to withdraw. So in order to withdraw, you have to give a two-year notice per the interlokal agreement. It's the most insane thing I've ever seen in my life. This is a project of $177,000 that we get absolutely nothing from. We all know the details of it. So Bob Bowman is supposed to be sending a letter to inform the EDA that we have rescinded the 2023 letter. I would like to include with the letter that we're rescinding is a second letter that was on notice, that it's our two-year notice that we're gonna withdraw the next time around. This leaves the door open if we have legislative assistance that ever comes along, or we potentially have a change of heart at the county commissioners, or whatever it is, because this is one of the most awful things this county's ever gotten into for the cost of it. So I'll ask that to be on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Be on June 30th's agenda.
Thank you.
You're not asking to send this letter until we've sent the...
I'd send them together.
So we're gonna reinstate them, and then you wanna turn around and do it?
That leaves the clock running for us, is what that does. Otherwise, we're just, we're gonna learn. Everybody's gonna learn real soon what this is all about. You're gonna see what's gonna happen. And here you sit. What are you gonna do? I mean, just vote against it if you don't want to do it. It's gonna be on the table to vote for on the 30th. My second one is just simply to bring you up to date on the most recent Lenore City annexation activities. They had two, neither of which has gone through the legal processes, as they're supposed to. One was turned down. It was for 40-something acres on Shawray Road, which was gonna have 97 homes. Unbelievably, the city did not pass that one. I don't think in my lifetime have I ever seen Lenore City deny an annexation. I believe Commissioner Quillen was there and saw that, and I would say her jaw dropped as well as mine did, as I was watching that show. The second one is on Highland Park Drive and Highway 11, right directly across from the Highland Park School. It is a parcel of property that is not contiguous. First of all, again, the process to get it annexed is the plan of services. They didn't follow any of the state requirements to do the plan of service and the public notices. So they have voted to annex that one. It is not contiguous to the current city limits, which adds more requirements as to what they have to do, one of which is they have to contact the county mayor and work with him. They have to have an interlokal agreement from this body to provide services between the current city limits and where this one's at. I'll ask the mayor, have you had anybody reach out to you yet? Okay. So just wanted to give kind of a heads up. This is how these start. This time, we won't be two years behind when we find out what they've done. We're gonna know... We're gonna know exactly what all they've done wrong, step by step by step. So I just want to keep everybody informed in the loop of what we had going.
I mean, this should serve as their notice to do it correctly.
I could not agree more with you, Mr. Commissioner Randolph.
Should we ask Kyle Basely to send a letter, let him know they're not doing it the right way?
That's entirely up to this commission. They were not gonna care who sends them a letter. We went through this the last time. There is nobody up there that's gonna follow what the law says. I think we all know what the implications are, and we are beholden to have to do this for our citizens.
I would say the powers that be in Lenore City are watching this meeting, or watch our meeting, so.
Somebody will.
Well, can we have this on the agenda to maybe vote if we need to send the letter to the cities?
That's up to you. My intent was just to give you an update on it, because last time we were two years behind the eight ball when we found out what they'd done. This time, we're gonna be in front of the eight ball all the way down the road. So whatever this body wants, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, I'd like to discuss it about a vote possibly on the 30th.
To what, send a letter?
Send a letter saying, hey, this is your notice, or you're not doing this the legal way.
Do you know they're not? I mean?
They have to notify the mayor.
Do they not notify the mayor after the annexation?
They notify the mayor before the public hearing on the plan of services.
That's not how I read that, but.
You can read it however you want, but that's what the state law says. They have to work with the county mayor to establish the plan of services. They have to have a public notice for the plan of services, meaning they did not have a public notice.
And that has to be established before the annexation occurs?
The public, the plan of services has to be approved before the annexation can even take place.
But they've not annexed anything yet.
But they did the plan of services, but they've not done anything. It's just like all the rest of them. They've never done anything with any of them. I mean, do what you want to do. I mean, if y'all want to vote, vote. If not, we'll just wait and sue them later. If they don't do it right, but they've already not done it right.
So why would we, you've already sued, spent, what, $300,000?
178. You and Tony's numbers are a little off.
Well, I, it just.
What do you suggest we do? Just let them take the world and say nothing?
This is just, this woman already owns this property.
That's fine. Follow the procedure. Follow the law that says how you do that.
The interlocal agreement, she's already got services there, right?
I have no idea what she has there.
Of course. She's got a house there.
I would assume she has a business there.
Of course, so that's already in place.
Sure.
So.
What's your point?
I don't know what it is they're doing wrong.
They haven't done anything right. There is a legal process for an annexation, just like there was in 2020 and 2022. And for whatever reason, the city has says, we don't care what state law says. The what?
In the urban growth boundary.
This one is in the urban growth boundary.
But it's not contiguous.
But it's not contiguous to the current city limits. The what? I think so.
I said, does it have to be contiguous if it's in the UGB?
No, they can annex it. I'm not saying they can't annex it. I'm saying the processes they're following are not legal. They have legal requirements they have to follow, just like we had to follow, just like our public comments. You have legal laws that says what you have to do. And for whatever reason, they just assumed they don't have to.
Is that, but if you're annexing a property that's not contiguous, is that not island annexing?
Well, it used to be called spot annexation. Prior to public chapter 1101 in 2000, that was a real point of contention. Now, the state law says you can annex property in the urban growth boundary, but you have to do certain steps to ensure that everything's done properly. They haven't done any of them, and I don't expect they ever will. So I don't know what you do about it.
I would like it on the agenda for the 30th to vote to send a letter to the city to let them know that we know that they're not following state law.
Will you give us what you just talked about? Would you care to send that to us, the updated part?
It's on vanshaver.com right now, straight out of M-Task, if you want to read every word of it. Yes, I can send you anything you want. I mean, I know they use M-Task, they're members of M-Task, so they should very well know how that works, but I'll be glad to send it to you.
So with it being non-contiguous, that's where the interlocal agreement, where the city and the county comes into play.
Yes, we hit the same thing down here in Loudoun on Dry Alley. Same thing on Dry Alley. I just think.
There's not already an interlocal agreement with this?
Oh, absolutely not. Every annexation would have to have an interlocal agreement if it's not contiguous. There was an interlocal agreement that they wouldn't annex property outside of the UGB, and they did that anyhow, so that didn't matter. Remember Walter Johnson said, "There was an interlocal agreement, it's not working paper, the written."
Well, that's a whole nother issue, so.
Well, I mean, that was your question, was there an interlocal agreement? Yes, there's that one that they ignored, but each non-contiguous annexation would have to have its own interlocal agreement.
Plan of services, right?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waller, I can put it on for the 30th. If things should change between now and the 30th, we can always pull it from the agenda.
Sure.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, guys. Mine was just an update to let you know.
Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are the items that were recommended by the budget committee. There was a consideration of request to approve a resolution for cash flow from county general to education capital projects in the amount of $600,000. Reimbursement will be made from the bond proceeds once they're received. The next item was an approval and acceptance of a grant with no match. The 2025 Tennessee senior center grant that ranges from $10,000 to $50,000. There was also a recommendation to promote two individuals within the sheriff's department with a $3,000 increase in addition to the COLA, the corrections captain to corrections deputy chief. I believe I said that correctly. And then the sergeant compliance lieutenant, the sergeant, the compliance sergeant to compliance lieutenant. Okay? In addition to those recommendations, there were line adjustments and budget amendments. And so we did end of the year wage estimates, and overall in the county general fund, it was a decrease to wages of $245,213. And there was an amendment to, okay. So there was a food insecurity grant that was approved in December of 2022. And finally, we have a purchase that's happening right now. So it's Samaritan Center. That includes a van, just so that everybody's aware. Once we receive the van, then we have to turn around and transfer it under the grant, which there's a memorandum of understanding already in place, so that's one of the items.
Can I stop you right there for one second for this conversation? You were the one we discussed this in budget, you know, said Good Samaritan. So I got a call the other day that, well, the county had promised to buy a Good Samaritan van, and we're holding out, and we won't give them money for it. So here's the clarification for that.
No, that.
No, no, I got the call, that's what they said.
But we've been, we've been working on this for, what, three years?
It was approved in December of 2022, and we've been working on it with East Tennessee Development District ever since.
Yes.
So just for clarification, everybody needs to understand, we didn't promise to buy anybody's van, and now we don't give them the money.
Oh, no.
It's been a grant all this time, and that's what the story is. So question came to me, tell the county to give us our money for our van, so.
No, we've been on it for a long time, and people have been, have left their job, come back, and we've worked through it all. Mitch Loomis, I think, is back. He left, and now he's back.
Mitch came back?
Yeah.
So overall, the amendments will decrease the fund balance by $388,035. And there are amendments in Fund 115, which is the public libraries fund. It includes end of year wage estimates, which have no bearing on the fund balance. There was two donations to, one to Loudoun Library and one to Greenback Library. One was $5,000, and one was $500. So overall, the amendments are gonna increase the fund balance by $5,400. In Fund 116, which is the recycling centers, it also included end of year wage estimates. And it did include an amendment for $4,750 to be added into, compiled with the $6,000 that's already in place in the budget to pay the first year's lease on the Lenore City location expansion. And overall, those amendments will decrease the fund balance by $46,980.
Can I stop you right there, Mr. Rice? Before it leaves this room with the misinformation I've already heard, what's happened at the Lenore City Convenience Center?
Thank you, Commissioner. Why don't we wait until we get done and put it all up here, where we can explain it?
Pull what up?
The map of the, pull the convenience.
Have we got that?
We can pull up on property data. Do you have access to internet right there, Tim? We pull up on property data.
Whatever you want to do. I just want to get this correct, and it leaves this room.
I was gonna do that at the end.
However you want to have it.
It's up to you.
Can you get the pics? Just let me tell it. I mean, pictures, maps, anything. We've got, we've got the Lenore City Convenience Center that's about an acre and a half, maybe less than two acres. And if you use the Lenore City Convenience Center, you know it is a busy place. It's almost as busy as Walmart. And we've needed to expand that place for years. So for two years now, we've been trying to work with the railroad, Norfolk Southern. This is the far west end of the old Lenore City Car Works property. Totally useless for anything. We have been trying to get them to sell us, give us something, a couple of acres of land on that side of the convenience center. Finally, Bob Bowman has worked and worked and worked. We have gotten an agreement. They're gonna lease us two acres of land on the east side of the convenience center. There's gonna be no additional traffic. There's gonna be no additional smells. There's gonna be nothing else objectionable coming to that building. It's gonna be exactly like it is. You're just gonna have room to get in and out of there. We're gonna have a place where they can move all of their stored aluminum cans, their cardboard, all that stuff to get it over out the parking lot, to make it all easier for the citizens of Loudoun County to get in and out of that convenience center. If all goes well, we're even gonna get to have a third compactor, which will add not one single piece of trash extra to the Lenore City Convenience Center. It's all about making it work and making it convenient for the people that use that convenience center. It is one busy place, and in my opinion, the convenience centers are probably one of the greatest services that the county offers its citizens outside of law enforcement. I'm talking about just walk in, dump your trash, and you don't pay anybody a dime. It's well-run. Chris Parks does a fantastic job with that thing. He has turned those things into just incredible places for the citizens. The recycling that goes on, unbelievable, but we gotta have room for that. That's what's happened to the Lenore City Convenience Center, regardless of what other people might tell you has happened. So just to clear that up, Buddy, just.
The expansion part on the backside is only, by a contract, can't be nickwits or anything hazardous. It's gonna be, like Commissioner Shaver said, bundles, bales of bottles, cans, anything, can't be anything dangerous, so to speak. The hazardous waste will still remain here, picked up in Loudoun. Only things will be different, you don't have to turn around, or you're gonna have to back up three times to get an exit on that part.
And of the two acres we're getting, I would say if we use a half acre of it, that would be a lot. We just want to get that fence out of the way, so when you come through the compactor, like Buddy says, you've been there, you can't make that loop or in that second compactor, you'll be able to make one easy loop out, drop your cardboard, drop your newspapers and stuff, without having to drive all over the building. Our recycling people, or the haulers, when they come and pick up a compactor, they can go all the way down here on the bottom and the backside, swap out boxes and come back in without having to do all that right in the middle of the parking lot, and people backing up on Hall Street and everywhere else trying to get in. So it's just a real, real good improvement that's coming to the Lenore City Convenience Center. That's all, Mr. Chairman, or Finance Director Rice?
It's fine, it's fine. Okay, so on to the next fund, which was the drug fund, 142. And there were line adjustments, but none of them will have a bearing on the fund balance, so no change. And in the highway fund, 131, there was end of year wage estimates done. The remaining amendments were to align the budgets with the expenses. Overall, the amendments will decrease the fund balance by $13,216. In general purpose school fund, 141, it was to align the expenses with the budgets, and they will have no bearing on the fund balance. In cafeteria school fund, 143, the same thing, it was just to align the expenses, the budget and the expenses, and they have no bearing on the fund balance. In general capital projects fund, 171, the amendments that are in there are to recognize the contracts that are being signed for the recently approved bond resolution for the school capital projects. So it's like a little more than $93 million, but it's just to put a budget there, okay? And in highway capital projects fund, 176, it was line adjustments, which will have no bearing on the fund balance. In education capital projects fund, 177, there was an increase to trustees' commission by $1,500, which will decrease the fund balance. And then also, this is the other side of the recognition of the contracts that are being signed for the school capital projects. So the school is not allowed, the school system is a component unit of the county, and they are not allowed to issue debt on their own. So the county has to issue debt and then donate the money to the school system. So you'll see entries on both sides. Okay, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That concludes, go ahead, Buddy.
Just two things. I'll keep it under 35 minutes.
Yeah, you will.
And we had our call with Moody's this morning, and they are confident that we will maintain our AA2 rating, which is outstanding for a county our size. And one thing, Commissioner, I know when we talked about the first page, we had that 200, what was the reduction? The 388 reduction in fund balance. Keep in mind, we're getting $600,000 back, so it actually will end up being an increase openly overall, that's all said. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, any other further comments? I'll consider the workshop adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.